There we are, recording. Thank you.
All right. Thank you and welcome, everyone. Do we have a call? Is everybody here? I don't see Scott.
I am here.
Oh, there they are. Okay, thank you. Well, welcome, everyone. My name is Mike Peterson, Mayor of City Cotonwood Heights. It is Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. It's just after five. Sorry, we're a couple of minutes late. Had trouble getting connected, but we're here now and we'll move ahead. Following the agenda, the first responsibility is to read the determination of why we are meeting virtually. And that determination states pursuant to Utah Code Annotated 524-2074, the city's mayor, as the chair of the city council hereby determines that conducting the meeting of the city council on this date at an anchor location presents substantial risk to the health and safety of all those who may be present at the anchor location. It is well recognized that a global pandemic currently exists related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, which has potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state of emergency caused by the global pandemic, I find that conducting a meeting at an anchor location under the current state of public health emergency causes substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the location. So, thank you, everyone, and moving right along, following the agenda, the first item of the work session is continued discussion regarding our gravel pit proposed development, at least the north end of it. So, Mike Johnson, I'm going to turn it to you. I know we have the agenda, so we'll try and be close to following the timelines outlined on the agenda.
Thanks, Mayor, and I'm actually going to just introduce this quickly. We've invited our planning commission chair, Christine Koots, to join the council tonight and thought it might be beneficial for her to just give an overview of her experience as a planning commissioner of the public process and answer any questions the council has about the planning commission's experience or what led to the commission's final recommendation. So, I'll just kind of get out of the way. I'm here to answer questions if you have any. I've got the plans available. If you'd like to see those, just let me know. Otherwise, I'll just turn some time over to Christine to talk to you for a little bit.
Welcome, Christine.
Thank you.
Glad you joined us this evening.
Thank you. Nice to see your faces. Nice to turn this one over to you guys. We've been working on it for eight, seven, eight months now. It's a process. So, you know, this one, there's so much to cover here. So, you direct me to some of the questions that you might have and I can go there. You know, starting with it's the PDD ordinance, which is a big ordinance on some of these larger parcels we have in the city. This one is the second one now that's come through the planning commission. First one was the Walsh property, you may recall. And then now the first, this is the first half or not even half. It's, you know, the first 20 some odd acres of the gravel pit. And that's the first thing I think to be aware of on this one is it's the very north end and it's a smaller part of the gravel pit, but it is a part of the whole. Two different owners, so two different applications we'll see when we finally do see the second part go. But this one, so we had the PDD ordinance, which is being revised based on, I think, the experience we've now had with two of these. And so, this one being the gravel pit site gets the tier, gets the highest tier. So, they have the most ability for density and putting things in there. This is the most dense we can get in Cotonwood Heights according to our ordinances and codes. And they have a fair bit of latitude on what they could do here. I assume now you guys have seen their application and what they've presented and where they ended up. The developer, I have to say, worked a long time with us and they were quite responsive, which is the hope with this PDD, using this ordinance is an opportunity really for the developers to partner with us and to figure out what's going to work best for this particular location because it's their job to submit to us an ordinance for and code for this particular place. So, when they submit their development agreement, they're asking, they're writing the zoning along with us. And so, that's what they did. And maybe, Mike, I don't know if it helps to put up the the plan that we then forwarded after working with the developer and taking public input over the course of, I really can't even remember now when it started, but I want to say seven or eight months we worked with them. As far as the application goes on this particular piece, it was a little tricky at first. The developer came to us. They were very anxious to get started. So, hopefully, you're oriented here as to where we are at the very bottom. That road is Wasatch Boulevard, which they call their road Wasatch Boulevard as well, what will be the new road into the development off of off of that northeast spur of Wasatch Boulevard. Right now, we're on the north side is the UTA lot and on the south side is the gravel pit. So, this is their part of it going over to, almost over to that existing access off of Wasatch Boulevard. And so, this is where they ended up. They started quite a bit differently, actually. And it's, they came to us really not having their uses and their tenants set. So, they moved around. There were a lot of moving pieces when we started the public process and the discussion in the planning commission meetings. They did a lot of work with the staff, with the architectural review commission, to really try to orient this in a way that was user-friendly and that was connected to what's already existing in Cotonwood Heights. You know, this is a very visible site. That's the other piece of this one that came into play for us and that we spent a lot of time as the planning commission, asking questions and making sure that the developer was aware of and responding to our gateway overlay district. This is a part of that in our zoning and it's also a sensitive lands area. And it's got the PDD. I think there's one other I'm missing, Mike. All those things were things that the developer had to meet on top of, as you go through our PDD ordinance, the housing stipulation, the BMR, which I know you guys are working on as well, and the height restrictions and which are candy lenient. And that's part of the give and take process that we worked through on the developer with these when they're in the planning commission process. And so, they had an opportunity for a lot more height actually than they took. And this, those guidelines that are given to the developer and that we work with as the planning commissioner in that PDD, it's the, I refer to this a lot over the time we were working with them. It's that chart that you see in the ordinance and it outlines each tier of our PDD ordinance, this one being for the gravel pit. And so, that gives them how much height they can have, what their setbacks might be off of existing uses, which for this parcel really affected Holiday more than Cotonwood Heights because of the Canyon Cove neighborhood there. And also, the public process showed that we, most of the feedback we got was from the Canyon Cove neighborhood. They were really organized and they came in and they talked to us a lot about their concerns, which were mostly traffic, a little bit on height, but mostly traffic and access. Have to say, Holiday City joined into the conversation and they partnered with us and they were, they shared what their concerns were, which was much appreciated. But any, you know, in the end, this is an opportunity with these PDDs for the developer to give Cotonwood Heights a really, hopefully, a gateway project that serves for a long time coming. We, as the planning commission, spent a lot of time talking to them initially about the fact that we take seriously that we're the gateway to the canyons with all of the traffic issues, the broader regional conversations about transit and parking in the canyon. And all of those things come into play. This, this particular piece, not so much on the parking because we were all aware that the, you know, the future parking structure, whatever direction that ends up taking through the Wasatch Regional Council is planned for the southern part of the gravel pit, which is the 200 odd remaining acres, the much bigger portion of it. So, we knew that wasn't going to come into play here. The traffic is definitely an issue, but not as much as you would think as far as the remaining piece of the gravel pit. So, we had those conversations. We, as the planning commission, were very thoughtful about that as we reviewed what we were seeing here, knowing that these two have to connect and work well together, but that those answers aren't coming in this application. They're coming in the next application for the owner on the southern portion of it. So, they, you know, the process moved along. The developer actually really, they had a lot of moving parts. They had different tenants they were talking to. They came in initially with tall office building, which is what you're seeing, I believe, are those pads E and F in the middle there. And it ended up being what those are now, which are, I believe, three-story mixed use with commercial on the bottom and it's undecided on the top. And that's the way these, these mixed use ordinances work. They have the opportunity to put in office or other uses up there. And this is going to be a phase development. That's another thing that comes into play with these PDDs being these large sites. It's very similar to Canyon Center, what you saw there where they're selling off pieces of it. They're not necessarily going to follow through on the development of all these buildings. They will on that large apartment. They will on the condos. Other than that, I don't think it's determined yet. So, we'll see this come in over time. There's the other things that came in outside of just sensitive lands. On this one, there's huge impacts as far as seismic on this site. That blue line you see coming through the middle, doglegging sort of through the middle of this plan is that water, five-foot water pipe that's there that they were not allowed to build on, just roads or walkways or parking. And I think they were very sensitive to that. The other things that were tricky here that I think we hopefully moved in a really good direction, we're getting some connections to future trails, things that are coming. The Cotonwood Heights has done the Big Cottonwood Trail, which doesn't connect directly here, but it will when the southern part goes. And we wanted to make sure that that continued all the way through. There's the connector trail that they promised to put up the hillside with some amenities to connect to the future Bonville Shoreline Trail. The traffic access, they really only had the option. Well, Mike's probably talked to you about this, but they had what you see now, which is coming off that upper part of the existing Wasatch Boulevard, which is why Canyon Cove was so concerned. Their access off of Wasatch Boulevard that runs, you know, at the bottom of this map here on the, what's the west of this site plan is minimal at this point. They were working back and forth with UDOT and I know Mike and probably some of the other city planners spent some time with UDOT to coordinate that. The developer really didn't seem interested in that for some reason. It will be, as the other part goes, probably a more main connection. What else do I tell you? You know, the public input process was healthy. They went through all the steps we asked them to go through with the PDD. They did. They came in and gave us a preview. They did public meetings where people could come in and look at their plans and ask questions. Being in the age of COVID now, by the time it got to us for the formal planning commission hearings, they, we were mostly on Zoom, but we had Canyon Cove was very organized and they sent a lot of comments that we were able to hear. In Cotonwood Heights, you know, the comments were, I, when we don't get a lot of comments, I tend to think that people have been made aware and/or they're just completely unaware, but I don't think that's the case with this one. We did hear from a fair few people who live near here, up in Christine's district because, you know, it visually impacts us greatly and it's just access to getting through the traffic. And how do we do that? And then what are the amenities? So, we did hear from a lot of those people and it was on our agenda monthly for a long time. So, as the developer was working through different things with tenants and they changed things, they would come to us and present it. They spent a healthy amount of time with staff. I know Matt spent a lot of time working with them and getting the architectural review commission engaged. And I think that's one of the things we've learned. And I think you'll see it in the revisions to the PDD that are coming up to both of our bodies, actually, as a separate item that, having our architectural review commission work with the developers and writing design guidelines specific to their application and what they're trying to do here is really going to help the process because we, as the planning commission, if you listened in on any of these conversations, you might have heard us getting into a lot of detail about how high is this wall going to be? And what's this, what's this, is this building reflective and is it glass surface? And is it at the street level? Is it, you know, when you walk by, are you able to see in the windows and get that engagement? We had a lot of those kind of conversations and sometimes that is, it's just so much to try and cover. So, it feels good to have the ARC working on those design guidelines and getting more engaged in that part so we can really think about how it lays out and can people connect to it? And are the trails connected? And are the roads connected? And how are we affecting all the things that are already existing around it and that are to come?
Christine, I don't mean to cut you off, but I'd like to allow some time for questions and begin that with, first of all, saying thank you for your service and the service of the planning commission because I attend a few meetings here and there, but especially on this one, I attended the ARC meeting and saw that detail of questioning, but thank you for your service and the number of hours on this project. I want to open up to the council and I have a few questions myself, but the council, if you have any questions with the planning commission regarding the process or things they looked at with respect to this application?
Yeah, I was, I've been curious. This was brought up at our last meeting briefly. The money that we'd received for parking, I mean, it seems a natural that it would go next to the other parking ride that's there. You're saying that the planning commissioner, whoever said that it's really supposed to be elsewhere automatically on the southern end. I guess if that's the case, then how was it envisioned that it actually works together? So, we're not just kind of randomly putting large parking areas down there?
That's a good question. Yeah, we didn't dictate where they do that public parking. That is a broader conversation that's happening. It was not part of their, this was this developer's proposal. And the Wasatch Regional Council and maybe Mayor Peterson, I know you're engaged and Mike Johnson is as well with the Wasatch Regional Council conversation. So, those are, that's a UDOT initiative and they're looking at the southern part for that parking structure they had proposed a while back in their planning. So, it never came into play on this one, but I understand your question, Scott. So, it's, it's just not something that the developer brought to us.
And I can address that briefly as well. UDOT did meet with this applicant. At a preliminary phase, you know, where UDOT is with this parking analysis, they estimated they would need approximately 15 to 20 acres of flat ground to supply the amount of parking, parking structure and surrounding area access, driveways, things like that to fit the number of stalls in two structures that they envisioned needing. Where this is 20 acres total and a lot of it is not buildable. They couldn't find a way to fit it here, but they did look at that. Rockworth did meet with UDOT and kind of concluded that it makes sense on the larger piece.
I understand that is, have they given an explanation how they expect it to work with the other parking ride? Are they planning on abandoning that? So, there's just one? I mean, that's the part that, that's not on me a little bit. It seems like, you know, we got a plan so that it works together in the long run.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good question. And I think the answer is if, again, there's a lot of variables that they're still looking at that depend on the alternative they go with and how that plays out. But if a large, you know, thousands of cars being able to fit in a parking structure was on the gravel pit site, there probably would not be a need for the one at the mouth of the canyon. I think they would consolidate those two things.
I'm not talking about the one at the mouth of the canyon. I'm talking the one that's across the street in Holiday by the golf course.
Yeah, good question. I think the same concept applies there. You'd consolidate parking in one location and consolidate bus stops and people.
I think it's like Mike said too, in some discussions I've had, a lot of it really depends on UDOT and the alternative as far as the transportation system that is selected and how much busing versus other transportation alternatives. And also, with the remainder of the gravel pit area, do we have a willing seller willing to cooperate in providing space? I think those are a lot of, a lot of questions, but I think it's understood that public parking needs to be an important part of it. And as Christine brought up last time too, we have to also talk about UTA and its access to those areas. Christine, with the planning commission, I know there was a recommendation to the council on the affordable housing. I think it was 80/20 was your recommendation. Do you want to address that at all?
Sure. And just to finish up on that last conversation, Scott, the one thing that we did do on this one is to make sure that it would be connected through is that center roadway. We really felt like the only thing we could do there is to make sure that they were accommodating of public buses as well as asking for parking for trail users or any public users who would go and connect with the Bonville Shoreline Trail in the future.
I appreciate that. And maybe Tim or Mayor, if I'm not speaking out, I would really like to at least see some nice broad strokes with some specificity on what we're going to do parking always because having three parking rides that close. I mean, nothing's more fun than get on a bus and stop in 30 seconds because you have to pick up. I mean, because you're another stop that, I'd like to at least see some clarity on that.
And Mayor Peterson, the BMR, those below market rate, yeah. So, the way that the guidelines that we give to these developers when they put in a PDD and for this particular site, we, they ask for 10% of their available units to be available to those at the 50% of the AMI. And so, we had a lot of discussion about this back and forth among the commissioners and with the developer. That's the guideline. When they put in their application, they read it. They knew what was there. And then as they got further and further through the process and worked through and got to what you see as the application, they felt like they wanted to see, I think, what you actually have before you now as a proposal. We pushed back on that and really wanted to see, we felt like if we were going to give them that jump to the 80% AMR, AMI, that they needed to provide more. We, it's an issue that we know not only is the city mandated to do, but it's critical, not just in Cotonwood Heights and not even just in Salt Lake County, but statewide and nationally even. So, we felt like, look, you know, you guys knew this was the issue, some of us more strongly than others. And, you know, going to some, if you're going to, if we're going to give you that on bumping up the, the income, then we want to see more units available. So, that's, that was where that discussion went and then you see what the proposal came in as.
The plan commission recommended the 80/20 though, right?
We did.
Yeah, okay. Another question real quickly and I'll rush it out for a minute. One concern I've had for when we created the PDD is just the fear of getting too much height. You know, I know that in the Cotonwood corporate, we always questioned and had a lot of community feedback when we did our last development there about height. And when we did the PDD, we put a limit, but again, that's just, again, a limited. It doesn't, it's not a guaranteed right to developers, it's just that they need to work within that. So, what discussions did you have on the height? I know Holiday had some concern with the height as well.
Yeah, they did. And even the public comment we got mostly on height was from the residents down in Old Mill because they looked directly up at this. So, yeah, so again, you know, that's one of those things that's outlined on, you get, and it's also the way the PDD works. They, the developer gets trade-off. They get more density, which means more height potentially, if that's the way they choose to do it. And we get more amenities as the city, right? So, that's how it's supposed to work, but they, and it does to an extent. We, they came in initially with, the tallest one you'll see on there is the condo building, actually. And we had a little bit of angst because it's also the closest to the residential area. But when you, when you step back and look at it and we asked them for a lot of graphic detail on that so we could really be clear on what that meant and the public wanted to see it too. And they did some renderings and went out and placed them from different, placed cameras from different angles down in Old Mill and along Wasatch Boulevard and over by Canyon Cove and showed us what that height means. I think it's, Mike, help me out on the condos. Is it nine stories or 10?
I think it's 13 total.
With parking?
It's 10 stories of units and then a couple, two or three, I think, three of parking.
Yeah, that's, yeah, and it sounds huge. The context though, I personally, I think the context helps a lot here. The hillside behind this is very steep and tall and it's pretty much denuded at this point. There's, there's not much pretty there. So, when you step back and look at it, and I would encourage you guys as you're looking through this application to really look at those, those views that the developer created from those different angles down in Old Mill and along Wasatch Boulevard so you can see, and they did a pretty good job of showing you graphically when you look up at it, how it fits.
Mike, do you have those available that you could pull up pretty quick?
Yeah, I'm looking for them here.
Those are the tallest. You know, the other one, this is just mass-wise, it's not quite height is the apartments and it sits back in the development, which we all felt, there you go, much better about. Do you have the ability to show them the different angles? There you go.
That's from Old Mill, that last one.
Yeah, this one feels more like from Fort Union almost.
This one is the undeveloped cul-de-sac down off of Big Cottonwood Canyon Road.
Yeah, to see that one, to see, looking at that one tall one from that view down by the Old Mill, I have to admit that bothers me a little bit. That's the way that stands up personally. But I'm, I'll stay open-minded until we look at everything, yeah.
And you may hear from those residents as well. Dan Mills is our commissioner from that area and he spoke to a lot of his neighbors and they were concerned. He and they, from what he's heard, had felt relieved when they saw these. They felt like, okay, this isn't, you know, scary as it sounds.
Other questions from the council? I know we've got a couple of minutes, but then we need to move on.
Christine? Sorry, Mike, can you go through those pictures again?
Yep.
And I guess Tally had a question, then I'll ask my question.
Oh, no, go ahead. This is your district. I think yours are important.
Oh, I said, Tally, I think it's your district.
Oh.
I think Tally's right. It's my district.
I think it is. I'll claim it though. I'll gladly claim it. Go ahead, Christine.
I guess my question is, Christine, and thanks for being so thorough with the planning commission to get to this point. Can you, so you mentioned that you felt like, the end of the day, what's been given up for density, you feel like we, you know, you got quite a lot from the developer. Can you just like talk to those, those specific points of what you feel like we wouldn't have gotten had we not given that up? I'm just, I'm just like, because I think I know what it is, but I'd be, you've studied it for much longer than we, than I have. I'd be, I'd be curious if that's, to hear that somewhere.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a few things, Christine, I think, actually. I think there's a lot more sensitivity in the landscaping and the approach off of existing Wasatch Boulevard than we would have gotten. They really seem to be responsive to providing a lot of pedestrian network in here that they probably wouldn't have this, but I don't know how many of you are aware, this is pretty much the same developer who did Mill Rock. In here that they probably wouldn't have this, but I don't know how many of you are aware, this is pretty much the same developer who did Mill Rock. There, there's still a fair bit of surface parking, which. It's just what it is, but they have worked really hard. To provide pedestrian connections throughout and different levels of it. And we're accommodating of the connection to the Bonneville Shoreline and. Those things. They also worked really hard with us on. Making sure that that street that goes in, which will really be the main connector through all of the gravel pit, if you access it from the north end. What they're still calling Los Hodge Boulevard there with the roundabout. That, that. Had a lot of work with. With our city planners and with the ARC. To make sure that the retail buildings fronted onto it, that those apartments now have basically townhouse kind of approaches. To the street level, they made room for the buses, those roundabouts are sized to deal with buses. And the pub, the, the parking for access to the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, which will be right there is that little bump up you see off of. The northern roundabout. Yep. That's, that is the bottom of their access point to the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. And making the parking available for public users, which we actually wrote in before we passed it on to you. Those were a lot of the things that, that they worked on. The other trade off that we, that we were hoping to get, which I'm not quite sure we did, where it was the BMR. And that's still in discussion, so I know that's a hard one. Yeah, those were, those were the biggest ones, I think, Christine, as far as those trade offs go.
Ultimately, you chose to vote. Six to one or something like that for the, for, for as it is. And maybe if you don't want to answer, you don't have to, but amongst the commissioners, the difference between having fifteen percent or twenty percent of the units. Being BMR, was that. Fairly one sided unanimous? Was it straight down the middle?
It was closer to the middle, I think. There were a couple that felt really strongly about it and some that were just a little quiet about it. It came up again in our, in our first PDD too, and I think it's just going to continue to be. A topic of conversation as these come forward, but I'd say we were. Probably leaning to pushing them a little bit more on that as a commission.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Super quick, while we still got Christine, it seems, it's still a little bit car centric. Was there any conversation of an amphitheater and what, in your opinion, what would you want to do differently or add to create that wow factor?
Oh, it's a good question, Tally. You know, we didn't talk about an amphitheater on this one. We felt like this one. The, the public amenity was. The, there's a few things I think here. There's obviously the connection to the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, the future connection there. I pushed pretty hard to make sure we had. Easements for a connection to. The future multi-use trail along Los Hodge Boulevard so that it would not just stop at Big Cottonwood Canyon there, that it would continue all the way through. The, I would like to have seen this central pedestrian area, which is where that blue line comes through in the middle of the parking and the, and the buildings. I would have liked to have seen that be a little more engaged. And maybe that's a place where there was an opportunity to have more of a public plaza kind of feel. And I, you know, I don't know, we'll see where, where it ends up in the end, but. That would have been better. The other thing that I think could be a lot better is the, the surface parking. Especially along Los Hodge Boulevard really bothers me. It, it, it has the potential to feel like a glorified strip mall and we worked really hard to make sure that doesn't happen. And I am hopeful as this goes forward, we'll hold them to. What they said they would do there.
What are the elevations on that, Mike? Aren't they below the road grade a bit? That's what I thought.
They're pretty much at grade, so it's, it's, it's tough and it's, and it's so visible.
Yeah, it's, it's at grade. One of the ARC's conditions was that the. The vegetation and decorative wall that, that separates the state road from the development project is. Aesthetically compatible with the rest of the site and also is high enough to block, you know, headlights and sight of vehicles from Los Hodge Boulevard into the site.
I guess, thank you for that, Christina. It seems like some of the things, some of the things on your wish list. Are certainly on my wish list moving forward if we can enhance what you guys or build upon what you guys put together here. I'm still struggling and maybe I have, I need to look at the traffic study, but. I just wonder at eight o'clock in the morning, when all the residents of those condos are trying to leave. What that looks like.
Yeah. You'll hear it from your public too. We felt confident that the traffic study was good, but yeah, it's, it is. Something you've got to get your head around, I think. And Christine, I'm happy to talk to you anytime about it and. Pull up some of our, some of their submittals, which are now kind of buried in my computer files and share those with you to help you understand what we saw.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Mike Johnson, I know we're not out of time.
Sorry, Mayor. Question, I know. Been asked repeatedly about the dark skies. I know you've answered, but maybe it would be good for you to just talk to that.
Yeah, I can, I can address it quickly. It is in the ordinance very specifically that the whole development has to. Comply with the outdoor lighting ordinance as adopted and it just references that code. So anything that's in the code that was adopted by the council applies on this property to every phase of it.
Mike, maybe you can tell us again. Today and the last couple of meetings, you've been just information. What's the plan going forward with the council? What's coming in the next couple of meetings? To look at and what's kind of our timeframe of. Being strategic and looking at the questions that the council has raised in the last couple of meetings.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I think the plan for the next meeting would be to have a discussion focused on sensitive lands. So all, all of the hazards on the site from fault lines to steep slopes and how those are going to be mitigated and engineered. And what we've done so far to review all those things. That would be the next kind of focused discussion. And then from there, I, I think the plan is to just come back and start. Addressing council questions and concerns and, and just work through those until we're ready to. To, to take a vote on this.
I, I think traffic and parking needs to be a specific agenda going forward as well.
We can do that.
Yeah.
I would just add on mass transit. I think that's what the.
I would tie to that. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Really quick, Mike Johnson, any conversation from UDOT about putting that parking structure into the hillside?
Yeah, they, I mean, they looked at everything. They looked at a lot of different options, some feasible and some not and, and really. On this property, early on, looked at a lot of different options. It just. They even looked at putting their parking facilities completely underground, basically underneath all of this and it. There's not enough, there's too many constraints on this piece for, for UDOT to feel like it worked well. And, and they also have stated, and this is just preliminary, that they, that. The way it's designed, a more central location in the whole gravel pit site works a little better from a site access and circulation perspective. So, so they've looked at a lot of options. They, they kind of ruled out this property fairly early on and, and obviously are still working on that and there's. There's a bunch of variables still being worked on, but. You know, they, they obviously prefer a flat area centrally located in the site, whether that's what they land on or not is, is still being worked on, but. You know, they, they haven't ruled anything out as far as. Complex engineering or, or building near constraints or things like that. They, you know, they have the capacity to look at those things.
All right, thank you, Mike. And Christine, thank you for joining us and please send our appreciation to the full planning commission. Great job. I know it's a. It's a heavy task. It's probably one of the most important tasks along Los Hodge Boulevard that. We'll be looking at going forward. So thanks again and. Let's move on with our agenda. Christine, I won't make you stay with us. You're welcome to be excused. We need to review the business meeting agenda and you have that before you. After citizen comments, we have a public hearing on a proposed budget amendment. Scott, you want to just touch on that briefly right here?
Yeah, I can do that. So. In our budget amendment. The main items that we have in there, number one is the CARES grant that we received. Some of it was recorded in the prior fiscal year and then this is the remaining amount that hit our current fiscal year. Three hundred and ten thousand of directly reimbursable expense, the expenses that we incurred in, above and beyond what we were originally budgeted for. And then one point three million, just about of revenue to come in. So net on that, we come ahead about nine hundred and eighty three thousand dollars, excuse me, and most of that's. Money that was used to offset. UFA costs for the first. Quarter, quarter and a half of our fiscal year. The items number two through, let's see. Two through. Let's see, two through eight, except for number six. Are grants that we received from various entities. So we received the Arts Council Grant here for forty five hundred dollars. We received a Ucare grant for just about thirteen thousand dollars. A police overtime grant specifically to DUI. This is. For just under eleven thousand dollars. A highway safety overtime. Grant for speeding and over, or seatbelt. Enforcement for thirty seven hundred dollars. Police evidence sales, we, we have traditionally, when we sell evidence, we put that back into the budget. That's just over a thousand dollars there. A state asset forfeiture grant to us to be used for police canine expenditures for fifty eight, fifty nine. CCJJ grant. For just a little over two thousand dollars. And then we received restoration for various things. These are predominantly due to vehicle damage. To, where we incur some cost to repair our vehicles that get damaged for various reasons. And so these, this is funds that we like to put back in our budget to help offset. Excuse me, those increased costs that we receive for sixty, just a little more than sixty five hundred dollars. Last two items in the general fund here are kind of related. We remember we sold the three vehicles and then the Durapatcher. We did that, I think it was about two or three months ago. These are the proceeds from those vehicles and we'd like to put them back in for various reasons. And the police, they would like to update. An older utility terrain vehicle, UTV side by side, whatever you want to call that. And then in Public Works, utilize the funds to buy some other equipment items that they're looking to get. So net in our general fund, three hundred and seventy three thousand of additional costs, most of them offset by grant funds. One point three million of additional. Revenues coming in for a net of nine hundred and eighty three thousand dollars to the good in the general fund. The three items here in the capital improvements fund are items related, the first two items are related to track funding, so. There's forty three thousand that is coming in for the big Cottonwood Trail wayfinding educational kiosks, and we had talked about that before. And had to pull that off when the county pulled back a little bit on their funding and we, so we didn't include that in the original budget. And then number two is big Cottonwood Trail improvements and maintenance. And you'll refer recall. We actually did budget the expense for this in our original budget, but now we're able to have the offsetting revenue to offset that expense. So that puts that money back into. The capital improvements fund. And then the last item, number three is the Ferguson Canyon. Park, dog park, design and planning, and so we'll utilize fund balance for this. It's estimated to be about fifty five thousand and six hundred dollars. To do that. So net adding just under a hundred thousand dollars of expense and adding in. Hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars of revenue. So we come out to the good of, by about twenty eight thousand dollars in the capital improvements fund.
Counsel, any questions? You have an opportunity to ask again in a business meeting, but. I appreciate seeing the fifty five thousand for the offleash area that is our portion of the planning go along with. Los Hodge front money on the overflow parking, so. That'll be good to do that simultaneously.
I, I think that's, that's good to use. My only question is, is. If there may be somewhere else, some other fund balance or some other grant or something that we may be able to use, but. At least if we have a budgeted, we can get the planning process started and that's what's important today.
Yeah, the only thing we can do is look at track again going forward, but, but good suggestion, yeah. All right. Thank you, Scott. Next item on the agenda is. We have two staff quarterly reports, a financial report that Scott will do and. Scott, I don't want to spend a lot of time right now, but any surprises in that or is it pretty standard?
No, there's no surprises. It's, it's pretty standard, pretty much the same trajectory that we've been going. So I'll go over it in detail in the business meeting.
Okay, and. And Chief Program, UFA will, will have Riley do a report on that. Appreciate that. Now we have a meeting this morning and I'll tell you. UFA is a, is a well-oiled machine and running real smoothly. And we have three action items. The first is. Supposedly. Approving amendment to the twenty twenty budget after the public hearing. So I, I think that's been explained. And then we have ordinance three fifty three. It's the. Condon Heights City Colon is concerning targeted residential picketing. We've talked about that. Shane or Robbie, do you want to say anything about that? I think we've been through it in the last couple of meetings.
No, we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions on that? I think it's pretty straightforward and. Protective elected officials in our, our city. Item six point three is consideration ordinance three fifty four. It's. It's the ordinance concerning guest permits in the parking area. By Ferguson and that area. I think we've been through that and modified that.
This would apply to any area like that, correct?
That's my understanding.
Mike, that's correct. We, very similar to what you saw last time, we just added a couple provisions that dealt with. Specifying that guest permits are not transferable and that there may be, you know, minor. Replacement costs for lost permits and that we can establish an administrative process for issuing and tracking and managing these permits when they're issued.
Any questions on those action items? Hearing none, we have just a little over an hour left, so we need to be diligent. Moving back to staff reports. Scott, I know we've already went through basically the proposed budget amendment. Any final comments or questions on that? Anything else you want to present?
Right, I don't think we have anything else to add unless there's questions.
No, I don't have anything else.
Well, thank you going, going through that. I. Appreciate the CARES Act funding and. Hopefully that adds to the fund balance, helps us going forward. Okay, let's move to item B, stormwater fee discussion. I realize this will be also discussed heavily during our retreat planned in February, but. We have. Our consultants with us tonight as well as our public works director, Matt. So. Matt, while I turn over to you and you can introduce the consultants and lead the discussion. I'm sure you've spent many hours on a PowerPoint.
Well, this one isn't my PowerPoint there, although I'm sure I would have done a fantastic job had I had this one. Just to introduce really quickly, if we can, online with us is Mr. Craig Bagley. Bowen Collins and Associates as well as Mr. Justin Dietrich. Of Bowen Collins. If you'll recall, a couple of weeks ago, council approved the contract with Bowen Collins to. If you'll recall, a couple of weeks ago, council approved the contract with Bowen Collins to help us in developing our stormwater program so that you as a council and the public would have something to comment on as we came into the budget period and also at your retreat. Just by way of information, Bowen Collins is also the same firm that did this same, I want to almost say exact work with Mill Creek just recently. They are a well-respected firm in the valley when it comes to water projects, both stormwater, all the all of the water projects around. So we're very comfortable with them and what they have, they're going to be presenting for about, they got about a maybe of a twelve-minute presentation on some things and at the end, what we would like to get from you as a council, if you have any questions or things you'd like to see us working on as we push forward with this, so. With that, I'll turn the time over to Justin and let him do the presentation, so. And I don't know if you got your screen shared or not, is that working?
Looks like it's not, welcome, Justin.
Justin, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor, hello, Council, well, like Matt said, we'll try to keep this to the point and quick for you. We know the meeting time is valuable, so. The first things that we'll be doing here, we're going to talk about some of the background issues. Then we're going to talk about our plan moving forward and then give you time for feedback. All right, so here's the background, so. The city, Connaught Heights, was most of the development was constructed back in the seventies and eighties and nineties. And then you incorporated and you inherited a stormwater system from unincorporated Sully County. Most of that system is built out of corrugated metal pipe. And I know that you've seen some of these pictures from Matt in the past, but the estimate of of design life or service life for a corrugated metal pipe is twenty-five years. And and when we do the math, we know here we are in twenty-twenty with pipes that are over double their design life in some cases. And so you have some some issues that have come up and that we're realizing more and more all the time. You can see on the left, a brand new pipe outlook when it went in the ground and then here's a a pipe in Connaught Heights from one of our our maintenance videos, from one of Matt's maintenance videos and and if we played the video, you would see the the camera roll down the pipe there. And you may not be able to tell, but where the puddle is, there actually is no bottom to this pipe, it's completely deteriorated in the and the camera goes along, doesn't notice and falls right into the hole. And so. So we have some some infrastructure issues with the storm drain. Last year, we had about a hundred fifty thousand dollars in emergency funding come up for the city to repair emergency conditions that have been found out on the storm drain. And just to drive that home, I borrowed a picture from just across the way from Mill Creek. They called this piece of pipe Susie and put it in their lobby to show everyone how important it was that they fund their stormwater. Because this was all that was left of of one of their corrugated metal pipes in a city just like yours installed at a time just like yours, so. As you can see, there's there's some infrastructure needs that need to occur in the city. Another problem that we have going on right now, another issue in Connaught Heights is they have buried manholes all over the city. I know it's hard to see on the screen here, but every one of those yellow and red dots are are manholes that we know are there, but they're buried. That causes some system problems. That the system can't vent properly, increases the deterioration of the pipes. It also means that we can't get in there and maintain them or even know what's happening. And case in point, there's there's one that we've marked that we know is there. And just as an example of one of the problems that happens when we can't get in there and verify the system is when storms come and those pipes are deteriorated, the road might not collapse right away, but it will. It will start to bore out, take sediment from underneath the roadway with it. And you can create these caverns right under the road, that's in the bottom right photo here. So, you know, in the seventies, eighties and nineties when the system was young and we forgot about it, that was okay because it was new. But now it's older and and it's time to to pay the piper, so to speak, we we have some issues we need to resolve, so. That was just a quick recap, because Matt, I know has gone through that with you in the past on the physical needs for the storm drain system. So what do we need? We need capital improvements in the system, we need to find those places where there are issues and we need to repair them. We need to continue to have proper regular maintenance that identifies those issues before they become a big problem and before we have a brand new road collapse or something like that. And why do we want to do it? This is, you know, these are the easy answers. It protects the property, it protects property in the city, it provides safety, flooded streets are not safe. Collapsed roads are not safe, it protects the roads and makes them have a longer life, improper drainage is one of the things that creates road deterioration faster than anything else. And then, of course, when property gets destroyed, of course, somebody's going to come looking for the person that needs to pay for that. And a lot of times they're going to be pointing at the city, and so the more we can do to properly maintain our storm drain system, the better. So, so we just talked about physical issues with the storm drain system. And I know that that's something that we've talked about in the past. Now, I want to provide a bit of history with the regulatory state of affairs and kind of step back to the trend in the industry, so to speak, with the storm drain system. So it used to be that stormwater was unregulated. The the concern was to just keep the streets from flooding and that was it. But the Clean Water Act changed all that and while it took a few decades to ramp up, now we're seeing heavy regulation, potentially heavier regulation in the future on stormwater systems because of the concern over keeping waters of the United States and Utah clean biologically and chemically. And stormwater runoff from parking lots and other places are notorious for carrying hydrocarbons into the lakes and streams. Jordan River is designated as a compromised water of the United States, so. We have these regulations and it's called an MS four permit, so you'll hear a lot about that as we go through this process over the next few months is the MS four permit requirements. And I'm not going to read this off to everybody, but these are the six minimum control measures of the MS four permit, so every municipality in in the county is part of a single MS four permit and we all have these same regulations that are administered by the state, but they're under the EPA, you know, auspices. So I highlighted and read a couple of new ones that came out just last year just to emphasize that there are more and more requirements coming up for you on from an MS four perspective or a regulatory perspective. And all of these things that cost money and all of these cost time, so. From a more practical standpoint, from a regulatory perspective, here's a quick list of things that you have to be doing as a city and that you have to be paying for. You got inspections, you got to enforce violations when when inspection, when inspections find violations. You have to do water quality testing and reporting, you have audits that you have to go through. You have to educate the public and do outreach, street sweeping to keep as much as you can out of the stormwater system. You need to be working with some of your citizens who have stormwater infrastructure privately owned and maintained and inspect their systems and have agreements with them that they will keep and maintain their portions of the system. And so all that leads to, and that's just a small, small bit of all of the activities the city needs to be doing in addition to just maintaining and improving the system. And when it comes to regulation, as you all know, if it didn't get written down and it didn't get submitted in the right report, then it didn't happen, and so you have a big administrative cost to your system as well in order to stay compliant with all the regulations. All right, so now we zoom back into the city as opposed to looking at the the county as a whole. And we look at what's your funding history, so this is, you're the same funding history as everyone else. You collect taxes and you apportion those taxes to all of the different activities that the city has to 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 do, including stormwater. And back when there was just a few things to clean out and the system wasn't so old, you know, that was easier to do. But now you have increased costs going up, you have more requirements on you. You have capital improvements that you need to do, and so that makes it very difficult for you to adequately fund a stormwater system. It's a varied system, it's easy to forget about, and so a lot of these other priorities tend to to take a little bit more of the available funding, and so it's really hard to do. And you're not alone, all the cities in the area and in the state really are in the same boat. So this graphic here just shows what everyone else has done. Mostly, it's a good hard look at those MS four requirements. And in some cases, at their physical system, Mill Creek was that way. All the cities except for you and South Salt Lake and Alta have decided to fund stormwater with a stormwater fee. So the unincorporated areas are fee is pending, South Salt Lakes is pending. But everybody else is adopted and are billing a stormwater fee, so this is an approach taken by everyone else. So that changes the funding stream, whereas now we have a fee, it's still coming from the citizens, but it's a dedicated stormwater fee. And so it, I think an important thing to mention right here is that the benefits that other cities have identified for the fee are that all the users pay, so taxes exempt citizens and properties, they wouldn't contribute to stormwater because they're tax exempt via taxes, but they would pay the stormwater fee. And the stormwater fee is also seen as a more fair way to distribute costs of the stormwater fee to to users because it's based on impervious area, which is hardscape, you know, parking lots and rooftops and things. And and as a way to peg cost to those who impact the system the most, like the Walmart with the huge parking lot. And then it's a dedicated funding stream to ensure adequate funding for your needs. So. What is the path forward here for the team? So you've already done a lot of work preparing for a stormwater fee and investigating a stormwater fee. So our job now is to take what you've done before, take the rate study, take the stormwater master plan. And we need to create a program around those items that is defensible, that is easy for you to administer, that meets the needs that are specific to Connaught Heights and is ready for you to implement, so that's that's the goal, that's what we're trying to do, that's why Matt brought Craig and I on board to work with your team and your staff to make that happen. So this is the second to last slide and I've almost made my twelve minutes. But this is what you can expect going forward in the next few months. The first is and most important is that we'll keep you up to date. The next is that we'll be preparing a final deliverable, which is a policy manual for how the program will operate. And we will iterate with staff and Matt's team to identify how that needs to be put together so that it works for Connaught Heights and isn't just trying to copy and paste from somewhere else or something like that. We want this to really be workable for you. And then as we're doing that, we'll work with the city attorney so that he's prepared and ready to write up the ordinance language so that when you vote on it, it's ready for adoption. And that was it, so. Now we wanted to reserve any time for your feedback and questions and and we can respond.
Well, thank you, Justin, appreciate that, let me open it up to the the council to see if they have any specific questions. I know we'll be dealing with this in more detail at our retreat, but any questions of Justin while we have him right now?
Well, what are the restrictions on use of funds if it's a stormwater fee, or there's some that are mandated federally or statewide or what, I mean, obviously the intent is to use them for stormwater, but you know, what are where is that dictated and what are some of the limitations?
Justin, if I can grab that one. The, it's a good question, Councilmember Bracken, what, the stormwater fee is a fee implemented by the city. So your policies will regulate how that funding is spent. There are federal regulations and state guidelines that dictate that there will be a funding source to take care of this, but it doesn't specify that funding source, I mean, right now our funding source is the general fund. So we we meet that requirement. But the stormwater policy, the stormwater fee, if you choose to adopt it, will where it's spent would be done by the council making that decision, that regulation.
Thank you. But but I think the more specifically to his question, if the fee's adopted, along with that adoption would be language that sets the guardrails and defines how that will be spent though.
That would be correct, and those are defined as you as a council choose to move forward.
A a question for Justin, obviously you've worked with several other municipalities. It's my understanding from talking to many mayors that the infrastructure or stormwater infrastructure throughout the valley, I mean, we're not alone in with this challenge, is that correct? Is this, is this kind of a standard challenge across the Wasatch Front?
Absolutely. Especially, it's especially uniform with respect to the MS four permit. Each of you are permities on the same permit through the state and up up to that meets federal guidelines. Now you and Mill Creek and some of the older communities have the added challenge of a law of capital improvement requirements needed. You know, some of the newer cities on the west side, their their concern is meeting the regulations for the MS four permit. Yours are those same concerns, but on top of that, you have very aged infrastructure that you need to take care of.
How long has Holiday had their
Theirs is one of the newest. The last time I audited was last summer and they had not yet adopted, but I just checked it before this meeting to ensure I was showing you the correct information and it had been adopted. And I wasn't, that was one of the few that we weren't involved with, but it must have been in the last, you know, six months.
Mayor, and I I had a meeting with Gina Chan this this past week, yeah, they adopted and they're in the process of getting it up and running and and starting the the fee collection, so.
The one question I think we'll have is what to set the fee at, what rate, that'll be a real debate, I think, but yeah. Other questions by the council?
No, I'm low, Tim did do a a query of other cities and where they were in the county, so we'll want that graphic back, I'm sure.
All right, let's move ahead then, Justin, thank you so much for joining us and Matt for your guidance on this effort. And I know we'll have some further discussions again, as I mentioned before. Especially the treat when we start talking about budget and priorities, but it's a responsibility that's critical.
One thing really quickly, so we, with the council, the council gave us direction on the on the fee that we're going to be presenting to the public, obviously the public process is going to be a big part of this as well. So there will be opportunity for public input and anyway, that that's something that we'll discuss more at the retreat as well.
You say the council has determined a rate already?
Not not determined, but given us direction on the rate that we're going to be proposing to the public. The the final decision will have to be the council.
Yeah, I must not have been there, I don't remember us reading out a proposed rate.
I think that it was the meaning that you weren't at, that that direction was given.
Okay, all right, thank you, everyone, and Jess will excuse you, thanks again, Matt.
Thanks, Justin, thanks, Craig.
And thanks, everybody.
I'm referring back to your agenda, item C is agreement with Horace Engineers for a transportation master plan. When I first saw this, I kind of had a question because of transportation master plan, but it's not quite what I originally thought, so. Matt, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Want to get my screen started.
I assume that y'all can see the, see the presentation. Okay, so I'll, I will go through this presentation fairly fairly quickly. Little bit of education on master plans and where we are and why we're proposing this. The title is a little misleading and I apologize, I didn't, I didn't catch that. We're not looking at an agreement this evening, but we are talking about pushing forward to next council meeting, presenting an agreement as well as a scope for you, so we thought we'd go through this first to give you a little bit of time to ask questions in the work session. So a master plan or the purpose of a master plan, currently, we don't have one as a city. What we are using right now is an element, a portion of our general plan that was adopted a few years back. So we are using a small portion of that as our transportation work. The transportation master plan does serve for us as a long-range transportation infrastructure, a roadmap for that infrastructure investment. It guides us as a city in the development of these roadways and various projects that'll go on such as, and we'll use things such as land uses and future growth to help us put, figure out the demands on our transportation network. And it covers a broad range of framework of planning and engineering documents, and we'll talk a little bit about that and what that is include. The transportation master plan includes a complete cross, complete street cross-sections plan. And what that means is, what is your typical right-of-way cross-section look like? The width, sixty-six feet, eighty feet, different things of that nature. It also discusses a complete intersection design. One of the, one of the biggest throttle points on a road is the intersection, where you may have a road coming up to it, and if you don't have the right width for turn lanes and things of that nature, you come up with problems for congestion, so talks about intersections and existing future and pedestrian plans. Now, this one, just FYI, so we're all aware, this is along the, the road corridors, this is not taking trails outside of the road corridors and sidewalks, just FYI, so that we're we're aware of that. We do have a master plan for trails in the city that we use for planning purposes. This will take existing and future bicycle plans and add them in the master plan and update those as well as existing and future transit plans and also active transportation strategies. So places where we want bicycle lanes on the roads, places where we want trails along the roads or sides of sidewalks, anything of that nature. It really drills down to a, a, a workable document. The best practices in the development of a comprehensive plan is all needs of the users. One of the things that is really being pushed, and it's in my career, I've seen it change drastically, obviously, is everyone has a right to use the right-of-way in the road, that includes bicyclist, obviously, the pedestrians, and then finding other ways of transportation, ways to help that out with transit and other options. And then we talk about bicyclists, we're talking about your recreational bicyclist, your bicyclist going back and forth to work. All of those things are considered in a transportation master plan and what would be considered in this plan as well. Once again, it's, it addresses the support for safe access of all users, regardless of age, takes that into account, abilities, or what have you, with various policies and strategies. This transportation master plan will look at multimodal street design standards. How wide do you want a street or what do you want to see on this street? Do you want, do you want a bicycle lane, do you want parking on that street? Do you want no parking on that street? Those things will be taken into consideration. It will also show connection. One of the, one of the things that are very important when it comes to this is connecting streets and roadways so that people have a smooth traffic transition transit where we're not getting congestion all on one street. Improved bicycle and pedestrian safety along the corridors, I've mentioned that. We'll talk a little bit about traffic calming strategies. I know in the city, we have a traffic calming policy in place. It's, it needs to be updated and part of this study will include that as well, as well as the traffic impact study requirements for developments. You've already heard a little bit this evening with the with the gravel pit development, how important the traffic study is, not only to us as Cottonwood Heights, but to our neighbor, our neighbors. It's a huge, it's a huge portion in the studies of to figure out what this traffic is going to do to residents existing and also to our neighbors. So that's another purpose of the transportation plan, is to come up with those requirements for studies so that we're all on the same page as we do a study. Right now, we don't have a set standard, we we work with each individual development. Successful transportation master plans will evaluate the existing condition, development of an evaluation criteria for prioritizing projects. Obviously, we don't have a blank checkbook, we know that. So we have to find a way to prioritize our projects and our needs and an action plan to implement the recommended infrastructure. The outcomes of the transportation master plan are improved accessibility, comfort and safety for all users of the roadways. I keep emphasizing that it's not just cars anymore, it's all users. Promotion of active transportation by offering safe corridors or places where people feel safe to be walking or riding their bikes along the road, that's important. Improve the connectivity, street designs to ex, to provide the the experience for everyone, all the users. And a tool, this is what's very important, is a tool for the council, a tool for the staff when the, when projects come in. It's also very helpful to the developers as they look at an individual project. They can say yes or no, you know, this is what the city's going to require of us to dedicate or build. There's no surprises here, it's not each individual developer coming up with their own ideas. This is your ideas that they will work to. It's kind of like as you work through the PDD, you're, you're coming up with these ideas and they're working within that framework. So the master plan gives you a tool to do that. Just FYI, we are in the process of updating the general plan. And Mike, Mr. Johnson can probably answer this a little better than I, there is an element of that. But when you look at the general plan, you're looking at a very high elevation view and a very long-range view. So there's corridors that are laid out in there. What the plant, the master plan does is it drills that down into a workable document. Where, and and Mike said this better than, I I put this in here, the master plan is a more detailed document that implements the long-range goals of the general plan. Just so we know where we are on that. And I wrote general fund here, I think I have a last thing, just F, they also, the finally, the funding for this, the transportation master plan would be funded by an impact fee that we've collected. Now, this impact fee is a, is a limited scope fee, it can't be used for maintenance, it can't be used for building capital projects, i.e. the roundabout or things of that nature. It is very limited in its scope, and this master plan is one of those things that we're allowed to, to use the impact fee funds for. So in a nutshell, here's where we are, what we'd like to do is move forward with the transportation master plan as a staff to have that tool that we can use to make recommendations. I mean, to, that we can share with developers, residents, and you as a council and us as a staff can use these as tools as we develop different parts of the city. We would like to bring back to you with your input today, a scope in a contract or next city council meeting that we can move forward with and develop this master plan. That was quick, that was dirty, so I'm going to leave it at that. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer them if there's any input you would like to see in a master plan when it comes to some of these elements. We would love to take that as well and work through the scope on that.
Hey, Matt, real quickly, and I'll turn over the council, but you referred to something I've not heard of before. You said this would be funded or paid for out of a transportation impact fee. I didn't know, I didn't know of this section, I understand we have impact fees, but we don't have one, do we have one designated strictly for transportation?
Yes, we do.
And it's called a transportation impact?
Well, I don't know the exact title, Scott's on here, he can tell you, it might be the road impact fee. I'm not sure, I I called it the transportation impact fee.
I just, yeah.
It's the same, it's the same impact fee, road or the transportation.
So it's roads and planning and things like that, okay.
Correct, it's it's a plant, it's a planning fee, it can't, yes, for this purpose, it's a, it's a fee for this plan.
Okay, and the other thing too, which is, I think, important for me to understand, that this then is not part of the general plan, or it is part of the general plan?
No, this is separate than the general plan, and I can turn a little time over to Mike, he can answer this better. So I'll do that, I'll let Mike answer that question.
Yeah, this is, this goes hand in hand with the general plan, but it it is more detailed. For example, the general plan we have right now lays out goals, you know, we want to see connected streets and a good sidewalk network and bike lanes, you know, that kind of thing. Doesn't go into how, how we will see those or what the roads would look like to achieve that. Instead, it recommends, you know, to achieve the goals in the general plan, the city should study and adopt a transportation master plan. The general plan will also recommend, you know, trail master plans and pedestrian master plans and area, you know, specific area plans and things like that. So this is just one element of, of how to implement what is in the the general plan's transportation chapter. And like Matt said, we don't have, our current general plan recommends a master plan like this, we don't have one in place right now. Where we are working on a new general plan, we would make sure that the consultants for each project are working in sync with each other, so so that the results that come out are compatible with each other.
Valuable information and something which they would have had thirty, forty years ago when they planned our city. What, what's the expected cost of the study, just, do you have an idea?
It's, you're looking anywhere between thirty-five to forty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Matt, questions from the council?
I assume that at some point, there'll be a public hearing and or public input on this, but I had two questions, the first one's fairly easy. Would our traffic calming manual or would traffic calming policy be incorporated into this plan? And then the second one is it would be really nice if it were to show a path between what we currently have and what we would like, for example, on a standard residential road and or perhaps on a minor collector's type street, if it's going to give us, this is what we're looking for. Maybe if there was an example, this is what we have, and this is kind of the ways you would go to get there. That would be nice to have in that plan, I think.
Okay, just real quick, that's, those are great points, as far as the adoption of this, that that does go through a public hearing and a public input, we have that in a plan to do that. And it does come back for council on a couple of occasions, so you can have your input after public and and then you would adopt it, so it would be an adopted plan, so yes. And the others, we will certainly take those into consideration as we develop this scope.
Matt, where does the money get diverted from? Where are those impact fees currently being spent?
Right now, the impact fees are being held, and this is one of the projects that we would planned on doing with it. So Scott can add, once again, Scott can probably answer that better where they're held, but they were paid by developments that came in and for projects of this nature.
This kind of weird question, but we, I don't know, we tend to have these really great plans or and then practicality, they don't necessarily get referred to, like the intersection at Fort Union and Highland Drive. I know the master plan envisioned this corridor of like being a, you know, pedestrian-friendly zone where people would park and shop and meander around, but then we've become very car-centric and instead of being a stopping point, we've become a thoroughfare. So how do we implement, if we, if we make these great plans, how do we stick to them?
Well, right now, just to, and I won't speak for Mr. Johnson on this, but presently, when it comes to our side on the engineering portion of it and trying to implement projects, we don't have this, this drilled down level, if you will, of a master plan. So it's important that we have this document, so as we move forward, we can. This does take into account all the plans that we have existing, i.e. the Fort Union corridor plan, this takes that into effect. And as developments come in, we have this that we can say, this is what the council has adopted and requires. Now, this is what needs to be put in and built, and then we're not in this arm wrestling match back and forth.
Can I make one small request?
Yes.
When you look at this, yay, right around the school zones, like elementary schools in particular, could we take a look at potentially long-term converting some of those streets to a one-way street and making a very safe, you know, lane, a lane for bikes and a lane for school kids and additional grass or something more friendly?
That's, that's a good point, and we'll take that into consideration as we develop this. But that is how, that is part of a planning on a master plan, it's exactly what you've just laid out, looking at these different elements and seeing if there's ways to improve. And like I said, then in my career, we've come really along a big circle, that roads are not just for cars anymore, or at least the corridors not just for the cars anymore, so yes, we can certainly do that.
And there's some pretty cool overlay, like zero, is it called zero sum or zero something? You know what I'm talking about?
I don't know the term, but yes, I know what you're talking about.
No, the safety around the schools, I tell you, I appreciate that comment, I think that's critical with, with our elementaries and the high school and the middle school, yeah.
It is, that's why I was asking, it'd be nice to see some pathways from what we have to what we would like. We, we do have to remember that we were primarily designed out, laid out and subdivided as a suburban area. We're not an urban downtown area and we're far from rural either, and so it's not like we have a blank slate, nor do we have, you know, the the super density either, so that's why I was, that's one of the reasons I was asking about maybe some examples or pathways on how you get from point A to point B.
Thank you, and I assume this will come back in one of our next meetings, yeah.
Yes, I I hope to have something back to you at the next council meeting to to review and discuss and or approve an agreement, so we're moving forward. So I'll take your input you've given right now, develop the scope further out and then come back to you.
Thank you, any, any last comments from the council? Good feedback. Looking to the agenda, item D, and we've talked about this a couple of times, and this, and we talked about it again tonight with the planning commission chairperson. That is the Affordable Housing Tax Amendment, Mike, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thanks, Mayor, I don't, I don't have a whole lot new tonight, you know, we've discussed this three or four times now. I'll just put up the, what's in the the staff memo from this week on this item. Kind of laid out a few options for the council as we consider this moving forward. First, you know, staff, understanding that the planning commission recommended twenty percent of units at eighty percent AMI for qualifying projects. Based on our research of what other cities require, you know, applicable land use regulations and laws that we need to follow when we implement these ordinances. And and based on statements from the applicant that, you know, a project the size of, of the gravel pit, the northern gravel pit can be privately financed with fifteen percent of units at eighty percent AMI, we do feel that's reasonable for the number of units being provided and the density allowed by the city. That that's a, a fair share that that developer is providing based on their impact. So, so we feel that the developer's proposal of fifteen percent of units at eighty percent AMI is good, it's more units than our current code required, they're still affordable, they help the city further its goals. And and like I said, it is what was in the the June twenty twenty draft of the city-initiated PDD amendment. So that, that would have come to you that way, even if this text amendment application had not. That being said, we do understand that the commission's recommendation differs from what the applicant is comfortable proposing. So we, we see a couple of options, one would be if the council wants to move forward and take action, we feel that action has to be taken on specifically what's being proposed by the applicant. a- and take action. We feel that action has to be taken on specifically what's being proposed by the applicant. Which is not uh an eighty-twenty split. It's an eighty-fifteen split. So, so it would be a, a, a yes or a no vote on that exact proposal. Another option, um be- because of uh the, the applicant stating it, it's not willing to modify their proposal further. Um, the, the council could remand this issue back to the planning commission and, and ask the planning commission to make a recommendation specific to the, the eighty-fifteen uh split proposed by the developer. Um, understanding now that the developer is not willing to modify that further. So those are the options we've kind of uh of laid out as far as the path forward and uh happy to answer any other questions you have.
Uh, so.
Mike, can you make that, sorry, sorry, Mayor, do you mind making that bigger on your screen?
Is that the bottom part?
Quick question, Mike. So the planning commission then has not voted or taken a position on the applicant's text amendment uh when they've suggested or the modification to it to the fifteen percent.
So, yeah, the applicant originally proposed um eighty-ten. Uh, the commission made a recommendation on that. They recommended approval with a recommendation to the council to increase that ten percent up to twenty.
Okay.
After that, um before it was introduced to the council, the applicant reached out to staff and said, we'll amend our proposal to fifteen percent, but not twenty.
I for one am in supportive of our planning commission, either staying at the recommendation or twenty percent or remanding it back to the planning commission since they have not had the opportunity to look at the fifteen percent. I'm, I'm kind of comfortable doing either one uh as long as done quickly in fairness to the applicant.
Yeah, and I guess I'm confused. Is there another version of this in process that was city initiated that's coming up behind or not?
Well, yeah, there, there will be. I think, um, you know, given the direction on this and where this plays out, that may affect what what that proposes uh for the affordable housing provision. I, you know, I don't know that you know, if, if the council makes a decision that's different than what was being proposed, you know, we, we may not need to uh discuss that further, but yeah, we had held that city-initiated text amendment to let this PDD application, the development application play out. Um, because that is vested under the existing ordinance and, and we felt that was going to be confusing to consider a development under the existing code, but also consider a new code at the same time. So we held it, but.
Okay, you held it. It's, 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 it's on hold. Okay. All right, that, that's where I would, because I was like, it seemed like there was another one that was still coming, but that's stopped for the moment. That would take its time to work its way through, kind of starting over. Or I, I guess it, it'd have some advantage because this discussion's occurred.
Yeah, we would introduce that. Uh, we're, we're, we're probably going to introduce it to the planning commission to start the conversation. And then again, wait until the, a decision's been reached on the gravel pit development before we bring the text amendment forward to council.
Okay, what's, what's the council's prerogative? Yeah.
I, I guess Mike, sorry for the, the question. I apologize if I've forgotten. Um, upon approval of a PDD for the Rockworth project, what's the timing of construction? And um, and, and remind me which, which pads are going first? Are, are any of them immediately going or it's still speculative based on them finding the tenant and?
Yeah, they, they have a phasing plan. I, off the top of my head, I think there's seven or eight phases. And I know that the, the multifamily building, the apartment building um that actually has all the affordable housing is phase one. They would start um the engineering and design and, and building of that uh right away. The future phases would, you know, they would come online over the, the next, I don't know, five to ten years with the condo uh building being last.
So are you said the apartment building was first? That's like the one certain thing?
Yes.
Can you throw up that picture?
Yeah. Let me uh stop that, share.
Mayor, may I add something?
Please, go ahead.
Ju- just, just for clarification, last, I think at the last meeting, there was some discussion of this where this is a staff-initiated application. The council will need to make a decision on that application and that decision's basically yes or no. Where, where if it were a staff-initiated one, which would be coming up as we've talked about, you know, there's more leeway on that, but where this is an application, it's, it's, it's fairly definitive. You you either approve the, the proposal or not. I know there was some question at the last meeting on that and I just wanted to clarify that.
But Mike said that one of the options is to remand this back to the planning commission. That doesn't sound like it's a yes or no.
So, yeah, you can definitely, you can definitely do that to get their input on the application because that application changed. So yes, definitely.
The application has changed and they've not seen it. So we've had the right to remand it back for the re- for the recommendation before we proceed.
Exactly, but then ultimately, when it comes to you, the decision will be yes or no on the application.
And this is separate from the general application. This would be a separate piece or portion of.
Yeah, this, this would amend the, the actual PDD ordinance that the city has that would govern all of the PDD projects moving forward.
Okay, so this is an amendment to the, to the PDD ordinance. It would apply to everyone going forward.
Yeah.
And can you remind me, um, I, I liken apartment complex to something you might see in downtown Salt Lake City? Um, given the magnitude and scope, what, remind me what the, do you have that spreadsheet or whatever that you put together that compared um different cities? Do you remember what the, what Salt Lake City?
Affordable housing requirements?
Yep.
Um, yes, I have it. And so the, on the sight line here, the massing is, is a little bit deceptive. The, the, the parking structure uh that holds the, the apartments is a rectangle. The actual building itself is kind of shaped like an S, so it's not a big rectangular building. It's it's an S-shaped with courtyards in it. Um, let me see if I can find that quickly.
The estimates that tells by city and by and what percentages, is that one, Christine?
Yes, yes, Mayor. Thanks for clarifying. While, while you're looking at, I tend to, some mayor's request about this uh remanding it back to the planning commission. That would be, I concur with.
I would lead in, in favor of that as well.
Okay, I think I've got it here. Let me see. Sorry.
Mike, do we know a little bit about the discussion that the uh planning commission did have on that difference between fifty and twenty, fifteen and twenty?
I would have to check the, the minute specifically. Uh, I, you know, I think the biggest sentiment was uh was that they wanted to see a trade-off. Um, if, if they were going to increase the, the housing affordability rate um from fifty percent to eighty percent, they wanted to see more units and they wanted, I think twenty percent is where they they ended up and felt that that was fair, but I, there, there wasn't a big conversation of fifteen versus twenty. It was just, we need more than ten.
Because they were looking at ten and they went fifteen to twenty and settled on twenty. Um, I would hope if we do remand this, that they could probably just look at that fairly quickly. What do you think of the fifteen? Is that acceptable to you or not and get their input?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be supportive of that. I think they've had an opportunity with the discussion and uh uh very specifically looking at those numbers. I think they'd be well-prepared and it would give us good advice moving forward. And two, I think uh says a machine planning commission that we appreciate their effort, their diligence, their thoroughness in looking at this again.
You'll have to make that a lot bigger.
Yeah, I mean, I can send this out. It's, it's a spreadsheet, so it's going to be a little tricky to come through here, but.
Yeah, I don't, is, I don't see Salt Lake City on there. Am I blind?
Uh, yeah, I don't think we ever heard back. I, we may have updated information. Let me um.
Pending.
We had called their housing department and not gotten a response. I'll find the updated information and send it out.
Mayor, may I, may I add one other thing? Ju- just for clarification and Mike, maybe you can clarify this. The the gravel pits application for the affordable housing requirement won't amend the whole PDD zone. It's just the PD, be PDD two zone. Is that correct?
Well, no, that and Shane, maybe you weigh in here. That is not the intent. The intent would be to amend the full text amendment. The PDD two zone does not exist yet. Um, they are not able to propose eighty percent AMI in their project because the enabling ordinance does not allow it.
Okay.
Thank you. I, again, what I'm hearing, unless somebody wants to correct me, that this is important enough discussion that we would like the planning commission to weigh in on this one issue with this added information and uh be able to respond to us uh uh quickly if that's, if that's appropriate.
I think that's what we're saying, yes.
Yeah, are they able to do that, Shane, without going through it? I mean, that, that would be like a work session discussion and or possibly would they need a resolution? I guess they'd need another resolution to vote one way or the other. It'd probably be a couple of months to get that response back.
Uh, that's what I think. Um, I, I, I frankly uh need to look at this a little bit more, but I think it's going to take a couple of months. I, I think that it's uh I've, I've got to look procedurally where we are on, on this issue.
So Mike, is that something you can prepare pretty quickly and get to them, though?
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Well, I would just encourage staff to move as rapidly as possible and, and be insensitive to the applicant and uh return something to us, a, a recommendation as soon as possible, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on those topics? We're about fourteen minutes away from our business meeting. Uh, we don't have any calendars and upcoming events other than we do have a retreat uh tentatively planned. Tim, do you have a tentative date for that we can share with the council?
Yeah, so as of today, I think all of the council members had replied and we were looking at, I believe, February tenth from twelve to five. We'll send out, uh, we'll send out all the information and meeting requests for that, but that's uh what we're looking at as of today.
So please put on your calendar, uh, February tenth. It'll be a Zoom meeting and we'll have plenty of documentations. We've been tracking a lot of requests over the last uh year, actually, of, of things that have been priorities to constituents, to council members. We'll have an opportunity as a group to look at those and, and set those priorities. Uh, budget being a big part of that. Uh, we've got better numbers now, so it'll be a critical time going forward. So please put that on your agenda. With that being said, I'd entertain a motion to uh adjourn our work session and reconvene at seven PM for our business meeting.
So moved?
It's been moved uh a second.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Moved and seconded all in favor, say aye.
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 More, more important than any opposed. Okay, I'll see you at seven o'clock. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Mayor.